It's like embarrassing.
Yeah, I know. If you're interested. I'd help you build a good team.
All right. All right, it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting of Monday, August 19th, to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. If y'all would bow your heads. Dear Lord, we ask for your continued blessings upon our city. We ask you to watch over all our citizens, public employees, and especially for our first responders. Grant this council the wisdom and guidance it needs to move our great city forward while respecting our cherished history. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Snae.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
And Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show all seven members of council are present. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing regarding consideration for ordinance 24-66. This is an ordinance responding to petition number 24-03 vacating the alley off of Front Street, running east-west between lot number 285 of Hemmings Resurvey and lot number 409 of the western addition of the city of Tiffin and the 4th Ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio. At this time, anyone wishing to address council may direct their questions to myself. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'm Terry. I'm the one that was trying to get it vacated. My question is, and it's been my same question, I talked to, Ann Forrest called me last week and told me about the meeting, but the problem seems to be the city wants an easement through there, through that alley that I want vacated. My point is, why would we vacate it if I have to give you an easement? That means I can't use the property because I have to give you an easement to go through there. And I believe the council went down and took a look at this sometime back. And if you look at it, I don't know if you took the time to look over the hill, that hill has eroded so bad. I mean, I don't know why, how the city would plan on using it. You can't even get to the river from there now because it's so eroded. So I'm willing to go through this, but I'm not going to give an easement for that. It just doesn't make sense to vacate it if you're going to make me give you an easement. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I don't know if anyone on council has any questions regarding.
Yeah, I think at one point we had talked, we were kind of on the fence about the easement because if we did decide to, the main thing is that we're working on the sewer project right now. And so from what I understand, Matt, our engineer, was wanting an easement mostly in case we have to work on the sewer project, that we don't know the full bounds and leaps of it yet, right? But I think we were kind of on the fence because we could pretty easily adjust around it. So maybe that's something that we could talk about as a council. If you're willing to go forward with it and we're willing to go forward with it and you don't want the easement, maybe we can discuss that more before we pass the legislation. Is that okay?
Sure. As you probably know, the city owns the next two properties right beside it. So why would they need that eight feet for an easement when you got, I don't know, 200 or 300 more feet right past there?
Yeah, yeah, that's understandable.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Terry, I will take whatever council decides. Either they'll discuss that tonight or maybe at the next meeting, and I will pass along to you what their ultimate decision is there.
Okay, so somebody will contact me?
I will contact you.
Okay, because nobody bothered contacting me to tell me to come down to the meeting that you had down on Front Street.
Sure. No, I'll be sure to give you a call.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just for your knowledge, when we, if council does pass the alley vacation, there is a reservation of an easement in there for any existing facilities. Just, it's standard language. So just know that that would be in there. So for example, there's the utility pool there that's in the alley. So this is the typical reservation. It's essentially required under the statute. So just know that you'll see that. And that's separate and different from the sewer easement that city council is asking for.
I'm not sure what you're getting at, Zach. What would they, why would they need to go through there?
So for like a public alley or a street, utilities, electric, water, gas, that's not city-owned, right? These private ones like AEP's electric line, they have the right to use those public rightaways. And so if we vacate that public rightaway, we have to keep an easement for any existing facility that's already there. So for example, that utility pole that's already there, there'll still be a reservation of an easement for that. So essentially, AEP doesn't have to move the utility pole.
Okay. I'm still really not following you. They don't need to move the pole. It's not in my way.
Right, I'm just saying that there will be an easement for it so that it can stay there. That'll be part of our, the council's ordinance if they vacate the alley.
Okay, I want to make sure I follow you. So they may do away with not giving me an easement, but the easement will stay for the telephone pole that's there because there's a light on it. That's what you're saying.
And just because, it's a clause that basically state law would say that anyways. So we just put it in, just so that you're not confused. That was the whole point.
Well, that's fine. We need that light anyway. It's, that light takes you down that hill, so.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding this topic? If not, we can close the public hearing at this time. Minutes from August 5th, 2024, regular and committee, the whole meetings were distributed. Any questions, corrections, or deletions? All right, seeing that minutes were stand-approved as presented. We are now under committee reports, starting with Finance Committee. Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Law Committee Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
No report, Madam President.
Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Snae.
No report, Madam President.
Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, I do have a report. A Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting was held on August 12th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in council chambers. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Erin Jones, Scott Horniman, Kevin Reesner, and Dennis Snae, along with Law Director Zach Fowler, Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, and City Engineer Matt Watson. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss mayor's request for legislation 24-37 regarding an OPWC funding request and any other business that may come before them. Watson gave the committee information regarding mayor's request for legislation 24-37. The city needs to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, State Capital Improvement Program, for CSO 9 through 13 and 15 Inflow Reduction Project and Point Repairs. This is part of the Ohio EPA Mandated Long-Term Control Plan. Reesner motioned to have the law director prepare legislation. Jones seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Horniman brought up concerns about parking by the East Green Amphitheater. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 5:47 PM.
Thank you. Any questions on that committee report? Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Horniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, we are now under reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have a lot of announcements about things happening this week and almost all of them happening on Thursday. So first, on August 22nd, this coming Thursday, the American Red Cross Blood Drive at Senate County Job and Family Services from 10 to 3. There's a little brochure, I'm sure you can't see it from there, but they do say appointment required. And they give you an 800 number to make an appointment, 800 RED CROSS. That's the easiest number ever to remember. 1-800-RED-CROSS to make an appointment for that blood drive Thursday, August 22nd, from 10 to 3. Also Thursday is the 100th Anniversary Celebration of Zenobia Shrine Club of Tiffin. It's a great organization whose mission is caring for children throughout the world. To celebrate their having a barbecue dinner at the Amets, social hour starts at 5 with the dinner at 6. Also on Thursday, August 22nd, the Taste of Tiffin event downtown from 5 to 7 at the library parking lot off Jefferson Street. Also on Thursday, August 22nd, Battle of the Bands with Heidelberg, Tiffin University, Calvert and Clubia bands. Be there at 7 o'clock at the beginning. There will be a special announcement for everyone to hear. And then last but not least, I have an announcement from Aqua, our water company. So in the next week or so, is that correct, Nick? A week or so, or residents who will be affected by this will get a notice like this in the mail. So I'm going to read over parts of this so that you're aware of what is coming. And Aqua's mission is to deliver safe, reliable water service. They're working with the EPA to identify lead lines. Once they've been identified, they'll work with property owners to replace those lines at no cost to the property owner. Customers are not being asked to take any action at this time. The notification letters are being sent for informal, informational, and regulatory purposes that provide simple tips to limit exposure to lead. They also inform customers that Aqua is working to identify unknown service line materials and replace those made of lead or galvanized steel at no cost to the customer. Aqua takes steps to prevent lead from leaching into water that they distribute, and they conduct routine tests to confirm that lead levels remain below actionable levels. Nonetheless, Aqua is working with the Ohio EPA and the US EPA to eliminate lead lines. And once again, the owners of those properties where the surface line is already known to not be lead, they will not receive the letter. Okay? So there's lots of information on here. So if you get one of these in the mail, read through that so that you're aware of what is happening and you will be prepared for when Aqua comes around to your neighborhood. Okay, and that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the financial report for the month of July 2024. Fees for the month were $3,788,420.35. Total expenses for the month were $3,431,509.67. The general fund unencumbered balance was $5,514,144.21. Income tax receipts for July 2024 were $925,915.42. There was a total annual decrease in income tax receipts for July 2024 when compared to July 2023, and that was $75,630.53. However, year-to-date, income tax receipts are still up by 5.29%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for July 2024 was $113,963.27. The unexpendited balance for all funds is $39,039,639,164.28, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my financial report. And then I have one more thing to add. The legislation, the suspension for ordinance 24-71. The city administrator talked a little bit about that. This is, there's a couple of different things going on here, and they're both involved, the Park Department. So I just wanted to give a little bit of a synopsis. There's a shortage for the water bill, which we spoke about earlier. We have had a lot of use for the pool, and of course, there's a lot of displacement of the water and evaporation. And then there's also for the temporary wages for the park maintenance workers. They normally work through the month of October. Due to the increased wages that we had, which the part-time staff was included in the 1% increase for non-union that council passed in July, those expenses were not budgeted for. However small it was, it's still not budgeted for. And then also, we are paying experienced staff a little bit higher rates to keep those people. And also, there was a state mandate for the recreational staff as far as ratio of counselors to camp attendees. That was mandated, so we had to increase the number of staff. So those counselors are paid out of the same area as the park maintenance workers. So that's why they have a little bit of a shortfall there. So both of those things going on in that ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Reesner.
I move to accept the finance director's report, month ending July 31st, 2024, and the bank reconciliation.
Thank you. There's a motion to accept the finance director's bank reconciliation and report for the month of July. Is there a second? Councilmember's name.
I second that report.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just one thing, follow-up from our last meeting. Codified ordinances have been updated. So you can see, we've got 400-plus pages change. On the website, that is up to date right now. They have refreshed that. I'll have an ordinance for you the next meeting to then essentially pass those changes. There's a set of state law changes in there, mostly criminal offenses, to just bring it in line with current state law. So I'm just giving it a once-over. Our assistant prosecutor is giving the criminal law once-over. Just want to make sure everything in there is accurate, and then I'll give you the ordinance at the next meeting and make it official, and we'll be up to date.
Thank you. Anything else from you?
Nothing further.
Any questions? All right, we are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have mayor's request for legislation number 24-38, revisions to 143.05, rates for ambulance service.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 24-38 will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 24-39, appointment to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission of Carla Cash.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 24-39 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-41, to approve a credit limit change for the police department within the city's credit card policy.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-41 is assigned to the Finance Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-42, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the park budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-42 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-71.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-43, to amend the Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the police dispatch and fire budgets.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-43 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-70.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-44, to amend the Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the park budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-44 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-71.
And letter from Director of Law Fowler dated August 13th, 2024, regarding the amendment to ordinance 2024-48.
Thank you. This will be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself.
Hello, council. Ryan Punyon, Chair of the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission. Let me write my name in there first. Okay. This is our third time coming to council with our project to, our wing project, to access the squirrel funds. And I believe all of you know what the squirrel funds are by now. After both the meetings that we had last time, we listened to your questions and concerns and used that to revise our project outline. If we can go to the next slide here. Originally, we went with 10 of these sculpture selfie wings. We brought that down to just doing two for this year. And these first two will be better than what we first originally imagined with plastic outdoor material and vinyl artwork. We went with two completely metal sculptures. And the first two sculptures are just a series in this wing sculpture project where we'll develop over the next few years. We have partnered with the Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Coalition to provide the plaques for each of these wing locations. The plaques will include inspiring quotes and links to further information. The sculpture locations that we have chosen for these first two would be at the Hedges Boyer Park Amphitheater and the Frost Parkway location. Each set of wing sculptures will be powder-coated in color to prevent rust and extend the longevity of the sculptures. Fabrication and installation is by BAM Fabrication Design and signs. And the finished project for these two wings would be completed by the end of October 2024. We can go to our next one. And this is the artwork provided from the Suicide and Mental Health Coalition. It's a beautiful design of hands and a heart. We can go to the next one of the actual location at Hedges Boyer Park. I did mock-up some of the locations to give you guys options of what you would prefer and what the group wanted to see done with that artwork. One could be on the left side, one could be on the right, or we could stand it up in the middle of the back of the stage. And I will be asking for further discussion and a vote after I present this. So if we need to go back on slides to discuss the location, we can do that as well. Next slide. This is the blueprint model for the eagle wings. This is a very elaborate sculpture done by BAM Designs, and he actually worked with our group to design this first set. Again, the sculpture will be powder-coated. I believe what we first talked about was making the back of the wings, the canvas maybe a black, and then the actual feathers would be a silver, so it really pops out when somebody's getting their picture with it. Or if you're driving by, it'll look like a really nice intricate sculpture. We can go to the next slide. And I have two options for the location here. Both of these are closest to South Washington Street on Frost Parkway, across from the deli there. The first one's in front of this bench, as you can see. And then we can go to the next option. And this one's just right of that bench in a more open space. And the same concept, it's on a pedestal and set up so people can get their pictures taken. I did this mock-up of where they're at with no knowledge of how to do this. Our group doesn't have a budget to hire out other groups to put all these concepts together. So please bear with me if the size and everything isn't correct. We can go to the next slide here. And this is just a breakdown of the budget. And I'll go ahead and go over that with you. For both the fabricated wings, we're looking at $4,200 each. Service to install each of the wings is $750 each. And also, the plaque post fabricated and installed is at $550 each, giving us a total of $11,000 we would like to access through the squirrel fund. And that's the information I have for you guys. So if we could open up a discussion and talk a little bit about these wings.
Happy to open it up to the group. I think ultimately, this will probably go back to our Long Community Planning Committee as they, that's where this project initially was assigned, Ryan. But happy to open it up to the group for questions on what you've presented as updates and changes. Does anyone have anything specifically? Yeah, Councilmember Hayes.
Well, I just want to say thank you for this presentation. I think these hit a lot of the points that we were kind of missing, the previous discussion. And I appreciate listening to kind of our feedback on the project. Yeah, I imagine the actual specifics we'll talk through at a committee meeting and then kind of bring it back to council. And it's kind of with, you know, our committee's approval for it, and we can kind of move forward from there. And so you wanted locations kind of talked about right now, or?
Whichever. For our group to move forward with this project, obviously going back and forth does slow up our timeline of what we've figured out over the year. So just my recommendation, if there's anything that we can do today to make that move a little bit faster for our group to be able to finish and complete by the end of October.
Okay. Councilmember Kayler.
Madam President, as the Chair of the Long Community Planning Committee, I would like to propose that the committee meet again to discuss this update.
Sure. Absolutely.
I know that we already have two scheduled for this coming Monday. Would not be opposed to adding a third unless that's, unless we don't have time for that. I don't know if right now is the correct time to.
Yeah, we can talk about that while we have, while we have Ryan here and make sure that time works for you as well.
You guys can do three and just put us at the beginning.
I don't think I can cut in front, but I'm not opposed to maybe putting us at the tail end, which might be around 6 o'clock or so.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we have these at 7, 6:45.
And we're talking about next Monday for this meeting?
That would be August 26th.
And is there anything that the group would like me to bring further information on?
Can you forward this slideshow?
Yep, I'll forward the slideshow to everyone.
Perfect. Councilmember Thacker, do you have something?
I think it might be good to reach out to Matt Watson if you haven't already, to make sure that there are no public utilities because I know a lot of these metal sculptures, they have to have a certain amount of
Yes.
concrete in the ground, and so.
I can call and make the survey. That's open to the public to do any of that. I was planning on doing that after the funds were approved, before we move into the construction part of this. But if you guys would like that information before we start, we can do that as well.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And then I have one more question, if that's okay. So my second question, so how much of it are you requesting from the squirrel fund? And how much is coming from your budget that you already have?
This is all coming from the squirrel fund. And from what Dawn, our last mayor, discussed, and what the new mayor knows about this budget, this is the project we built for that initial budget or project money.
The amount of funds they're requesting is totally within the amount of money in the squirrel fund.
Yes.
Right. So there's nothing of their, the $10,000 that's
No.
given to your group that you're planning to use toward it?
Nope.
Okay.
Yes.
What kind of life cycle do you see these having? How many years do you?
They can last forever. It's made out of industrial steel, just like sculptures that we have already that have been around for, I don't know, 50, 100 years. So.
Acceptable to rust or?
Um, they are just like any piece of metal that's not treated on the outside. So we figured powder coating would
longer.
prevent that rusting and give it more of a appealing look instead of just being an industrial metal look instead.
Thank you.
Councilmember Horniman.
Is the size still the same, you know, like the eight foot tall?
They are.
Ten foot wide or so?
Under that size. I don't have the exact size, but it would be slightly under what we've discussed before.
Councilmember Sne.
Madam President, the fabrication about, did you say each one costs 4,200?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So should that be 8,400 that?
There is fabrication for the plaque post.
Oh, okay. All right. All right.
So that would be where that other part comes from.
Okay. Roger.
And the plaque post is almost like the same style as the podium up here where it would be on an angle with that information displayed.
Councilmember Thacker.
Can I get a copy of this?
Yes. Yep.
Cool.
Of just the quote of what I have?
Just the presentation.
Okay. I think.
I think city administrators are going to forward it along. Yep.
Thanks.
Councilmember Jones.
Is there going to be a plaque with these sculptures, like explaining, you know?
And that was the partnership with the Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Coalition, where they're working with MLAD to get an outdoor plaque made for that post.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reesner.
There's one more about the, so then they go in the ground. Is the pole going to be in concrete? Or are you just going into the, into the ground?
It will have a concrete footer around it after the, just like if you did a fence post, it will have the proper setup for that.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. And that's all included in the insulation charge of 750 per sculpture.
Councilmember Sne.
On the, on the plaques, will we see the deration, the variety of it before?
I can have that put together for our meeting on Monday. So you guys can take a look at that.
Right.
But what the group has discussed before is inspirational quotes or messages and maybe a QR code for further information.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to reiterate what Councilman Hayes has said. Thank you for taking the time to put this back together and come with updated information. Could you go back to the previous slide really quickly? This is exactly what I was looking for when we were looking for like a concept, like what is it going to look like when it's up? So that's, thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome. Appreciate it. I'm glad I can help you guys better understand the project and hopefully get the funds needed to complete this project.
Sure.
Any other questions?
If not, thank you so much.
Yep. And I'll see you guys on Monday.
On Monday, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So does anyone else have any, anything to address counsel with this evening?
Good afternoon. Good evening, Counsel. My name is Jay Kassler. I'm a renter here. I'm concerned about water, water contamination from the city. And I'm wanting to know where I can go to get my water tested for, for drinking water in my residence that I live in. I don't know, I don't know where to start to go to get that done.
Sure. Mayor.
I believe that Heidelberg has a water quality lab, and they may do some testing for independent people that come in to the water quality, quality lab. It's at Bear's Hall on the second floor, I believe.
Okay. All righty. All right. Thank you.
Lord Director.
Yeah, if I may, I believe Culligan will do it. Hempi may also, either one of those water treatment companies.
All righty.
You could take it to either. Just a point of clarification, the water's a private utility. That's Aqua. The city's doesn't provide the water. But again, Culligan, Hempi, one of those, you can take it there and they should test it for you.
All righty.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything for counsel this evening? Sure.
Hello, everyone. My name's Brent Bossdecker. I'm running for County Commissioner. I just want to come in and introduce myself. And that's really it. Just come in and listen in and say hello.
Thank you. Where are you from?
Questions, feel free to ask.
Where, are you from, Tiffin?
Yes, actually, I live in the Fourth Ward. I live out across from Hedges Boyer Park.
Awesome. Well, thanks for coming in.
That's really it.
Very nice to meet you and good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone else have anything for counsel this evening? Awesome. If nothing else, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? If none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2024-34, introduced by Kevin Reesner, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 24-34. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Resolution 2024-34 suspending City Council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Resolution 24-34. Is there a second? Councilmember Horniman.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Resolution 24-34 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 2024-35, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 24-35. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for immediate passage of Resolution 24-35, suspending Council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Resolution 24-35. Is there a second? Councilmember Hayes.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Just kind of wanted to clarify what we're doing here. So we're in the process of applying for both a grant and a 0% interest rate loan. And there's a very tight deadline. So necessary funds that we need.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Resolution 24-35 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 2024-36, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Urban Waters Federal Partnership Tree Planting Grant and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 24-36. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for immediate passage of Resolution 24-36, suspending Council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's three reading rule and immediate passage Resolution 24-36. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Thacker.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to explain this one a little bit too, since it wasn't something that came up in our committee. Basically, Brandon was approached with the possibility of getting some more grant funding. That was really similar to actually the same thing as what we submitted for earlier in the year for $15,000. But now there's an additional 3,600 approximately. And so why not utilize these funds for the project that we're already doing? So that's, that's all it is.
Lord Director.
Yeah, and just the tight deadline is that ODNR asked for the application to be submitted by Friday this week. So hence the suspension and emergency.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. Now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Resolution 24-36 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Excuse me, Lord Director, may I? Do we need a motion to amend 48?
Yeah, it can be read and then a motion can be.
And then afterwards. Okay, thank you. We have ordinance number 2024-48, introduced by Scott Horniman, an ordinance zoning 79.27, 79.506 acres of land, more or less owned by David J Wagner and Alan T Wagner, trustees, and Annie Forrest and Claire M Forrest, Jr., co-executors of the estate of Martha Ann Forrest in the Second Ward of the city as Zone M2, heavy industrial district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of the Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinance.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-48. Councilmember Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 2024-48, please.
Thank you. Does that need additional?
You need to clarify what you're amending.
We're going to amend the acreage from 79.5 acres to 79.276 acres would be the amendment made on the, on the ordinance.
Thank you. There is a motion to amend ordinance 2024-48 due to the, the acreage specifically and correcting that. Is there a second? Thank you. Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry.
I was just going to clarify if you don't mind. Yeah, so this is just me falling on my sword, just a typo on my end. I just had the acreage that this is what was originally sought to be petitioned. They modified that before they turned in their petition. So this just gets the appropriate acreage on that zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for the immediate passages of amended ordinance 2024-48.
Thank you. There is a motion to pass amended ordinance 2024-48. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Ordinance 24, amended ordinance 2024-48 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Amended ordinance number 2024-49, introduced by John Kayler, an ordinance to enact residential infill development standards in the zoning code and amend sections 1167.03, 1169.03, 118101, and 118105 in of the zoning code.
Thank you. This is the third reading of amended ordinance 24-49. Councilmember Kayler.
Madam President, I move for the passage of ordinance 2024-49 as amended.
Thank you. There is a motion for a passage of amended ordinance 2024-49. Is there a second? Councilmember Sne.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Horniman.
These are just some zoning changes that we're making to the code and such. Kind of the biggest things that I saw out of it were kind of changes to like the criteria for like outbuildings and such and everything. You know, one of the things of the outbuildings should be taking up the maximum is 30% of the lot. And an outbuilding can be no higher than 18 feet or the height of the primary building was another one of the language. And what was the other one here? Oh, and the size of an outbuilding cannot be larger than the square footage of the actual primary dwelling is, those are a few of the highlights that, you know, just that I picked out that are changing the zoning code. So.
Thank you. That's helpful. Lord Director.
Yeah, just to echo what Scott said, really the, probably the primary thing in here is the enactment of this residential infill development standard. Essentially, the goal is that for housing, new housing that would be developed in an existing neighborhood, we want it to look similar to what's already there so that there's some cohesiveness to that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we can vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes.
Yes.
Thank you. Amended ordinance 2024-49 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance 2024-61, introduced by Scott Horniman, an ordinance naming the Ella Street Bridge for Rich Foote.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-61.
Ordinance number 2024-62, introduced by Scott Horniman, an ordinance accepting annexation to the city of Tiffin of a parcel of land being 79.276 acres, more or less in Section 7 Township 2 North, Range 15 East of Clinton Township on the petition of the owners of said real estate.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-62. Councilmember Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that Council suspend its three reading rule and the immediate passage of ordinance 24-62.
Thank you. There is a motion to suspend Council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 24-62. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Horniman.
Thank you, Madam President. This just kind of piggybacks on the prior ordinance of 24-48. This just kind of finishes up the process of the annexation for that tract of land over there on the north side of town.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we can first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Horniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Sne.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Hayes. And Hayes?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Sneay?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
And Hayes?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-62 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-63, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the fire department budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-63.
Ordinance number 2024-65, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an amended sewer easement and take all actions necessary to acquire easement rights for real property located at 11 Indian Lane.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-65.
Ordinance number 2024-66, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance responding to petition number 2024-03 vacating the alley off of Front Street running east-west between Lot Number 285 of Hemmings Re-Survey and Lot Number 409 of the Western Addition to the City of Tiffin in the 4th Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-66. Councilor, Law Director?
Yeah, just following off of tonight's discussion, I don't know if anyone had thoughts or opinions regarding the sewer easement request that you had to the petitioner. If there's any direction you want to give to me, or?
Councilmember Thacker?
I'm fine with removing it because, I mean, I think we were kind of on the fence anyway when we were discussing it in the first place, and we thought, well, maybe we reserve it, but if this is such a sticking point for him, I think it might be beneficial to us and to him to remove that.
Do you need a motion for that, to amend it then?
Well, the, yeah, your question, do we need to take any action? Your request to the petitioner really wasn't by any real action. It was just sort of a general consensus at the time, so it's not part of the ordinance. It was more of a, council's inclined to say yes, if that's part of it. So, but it's, it's your guys' call. If you want to make a motion and pass it so that you have some action to essentially withdraw that request, you can.
I mean, it's up to you guys, in my opinion. I don't know that it makes sense if you, if it's not in the actual ordinance to make any sort of action with, with that specifically, but it's up to you guys. Councilmember Thacker?
I guess if we don't have to have any specific vote on whether or not there's an easement, because it was more of a request anyway, I'll just publicly state that for me, it's, I'm not requiring it for my vote.
Any other thoughts from council? Councilmember Sneay?
Yes, Madam President. Are we, do we foresee in the future that we will need a kind of development down there? I mean, I did go through the whole plan Matt Watson had, but a kind of future development that we will need for the sewer lines?
City Administrator?
Yes.
So entirely unsure, and that's the part, the problem of, you know, not having a crystal ball and not knowing the future. We don't know what we would need there, but, you know, if we're talking about actual physical infrastructure under the ground, as the city engineer had stated, there is, there's another path we can probably take. It may not be the path of least resistance, but we would still have an opportunity to move ahead with a project if we so needed it. One thing that we, we probably would not want to do in the future, and we're not discussing this necessarily immediately, but the city, the city administration, the previous administration, and I would, I would go on record to state that I kind of feel the same way still, we would not probably be looking to sell the land we have out there anytime, just because long-term, we don't know what we would want to do with, say, the riverbank or any kind of river access, so continuing to maintain property along that line is, is in the city's benefit, I believe.
Right, right. Okay.
Law Director?
Yeah, and just to add on, my recollection from our street committee meeting with, what Engineer Watson had said was that, you know, we still have that lot there, and you're also going to get half the alley, so if the, if a sewer line has to go in there, it can go on an angle, and given the elevation, it probably works just fine. So my impression was it wasn't critical that we have it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this topic? Thank you.
Ordinance number 2024-67, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance to amend Chapter 902 of the codified ordinances.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-67. Law Director?
If I may, so we, at the city, the administration have received some outreach about it. They have not come for, for public comment tonight, but based on their communication, I do anticipate that I will have some proposed amendments to send to you for the final reading at the next meeting. The gist of it is, is to, I think, correct a few things that are in there. One is the bond. So current bond amount's $1,000. The request was to up it to $10,000, and one thing that the city engineer was comfortable with changing was to make it clear that that bond could be on file at the engineer's office for the duration of the year. So contractor, if they had four or five projects that year, they would only need one bond that's just held on file throughout the duration of the year. So that is something that I think we would amend. There was another small amendment that I can't remember, but there may be some proposed amendments. I'll do like what I've done. I will just send you a written communication along with those proposed changes to explain all that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Ordinance number 2024-68, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance to amend Section 905.09 of the codified ordinances.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-68.
Ordinance number 2024-69, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance to amend Chapter 936 of the codified ordinances.
This is the second reading of ordinance 24-69.
Ordinance number 2024-70, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate Ohio EMA grant funds into the police dispatch and fire budgets.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-70.
An ordinance number 2024-71, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the park budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-71. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of 24-71, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 24-71. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reisner?
This is a busy one. As noted by the Finance Director, this is, this is actually three line items in the budget. The first one, there's, there's not enough payroll to pay some of the park staff through the end, so this, this gets that fixed. And then this also takes into account some increases for the more experienced staff, and also, and complies with the state mandate involved there, too. And under the contractual services, there's $6,000 to make sure we meet the existing water bill for the pool. There were some extra usage, displacement, and leakages that apparently been fixed this year. So $6,000 for the pool, $2,700 for personal services and benefits, and then $15,000 for personal services and wages.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Horniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Sneay?
Yes.
Thacker. I'm sorry, and Thacker?
Yes.
And Hayes?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Horniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Sneay?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
And Hayes?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-71 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? City Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I wanted to bring to council's intention regarding ordinance 2461, I should have maybe mentioned this earlier. Be aware, we may have a amendment to that ordinance at the next meeting. I am getting quotes right now for placards that would have Mr. Fote's name on them, dedicating them much in the same way as we have the Bernie Homan Bridge, the Clive Lupton Bridge, and working with a local company to get those. So most likely, if anyone's been to Hedges Boyer, I'm using that as an example because I was just there earlier today, there's, there's two small little monuments at either side of the bridge for that dedication. At some point, council may want to try to schedule an actual dedication ceremony, but in order to pay for those, unfortunately, I just don't have that in the budget immediately, so we would maybe include that in this ordinance, so we'd have some funds that we could purchase those monuments. And I'll come back to council with that at the next meeting.
For sure. Thank you. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce a finance committee meeting. The purpose of the meeting, it's going to be August 26 at 5:15 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss mayor's requests for legislation 24-38 and 24-41, and any other business that comes before the committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I'd like to announce a personnel and labor relations committee meeting on Monday, August 26. They'll be in council chambers. It'll be immediately following the finance committee's meeting. Purpose of the meeting will be to discuss mayor's requests for legislation 24-39, and any other business to come before us that evening.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kayler?
Madam President, I would like to announce a meeting of the Law and Community Planning Committee, also on August 26, 2024, immediately following the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting in council chambers. And the purpose of the meeting would be to discuss the T-Mac Link project and any other business that comes before the committee.
Thank you. Anything else to come before council this evening? Seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you.